The legions like to also have a moment of silence for the victims of the tragedy in Highland Park, Illinois. Trustee Sampson, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a few announcements before we get into the agenda. If you need an agenda, it's on the table. The Bull Road covert replacement is nearing its completion. We are looking to have it paved tomorrow is Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, so it should be open by week's end. Congratulations to the events committee and trustee Ladado for the amazing job this past Friday with the fight. Route 94 is completed. Ahern Boulevard, however, will remain closed for approximately three more weeks. There were some unforeseen problems that Orange and Rockland needed to address after the six years of planning. We are asking residents, once again, please do not place any grass sticks or other debris in the ground bags. Please, when mowing your lawn, we ask you to clean up the grass clippings on the street. We're putting together another newsletter that will be mailed out with the water bills. It's our hope that we'll be preparing four newsletters per year. Mike trustee Ladado?
Yes.
You like newsletters, so.
Yes, I love them.
We did receive a great deal of positive feedback on the letter. I received a postcard from a young gentleman. I'm writing to you about, it starts off with, "Dear Mr. Bucko, I'm writing to you regarding what to do with preventing violence. It's important to me because it affects everyone's, everyone's safety and health. As my elected official, I want you to support policies that prevent violence. Sincerely, Nick Chuck." I did a little drawing on the postcard. Pass it on.
Is there a return address? Is it village?
Uh, no return address. So Nick, if you're watching, thank you very much. Uh, new business signage for Washingtonville Nail Spa. Actually, my name is here, but trustee Ladado has the...
This was tabled from the last meeting?
Yes.
But essentially, they did not realize that this sign, that we had approved it, and they, they already had it up before we approved it. And it's too small for the front of the building. They thought, so that's what this is now, the second one. So it's going to look just like this, but in the colors they described. Did I get that right?
Okay, good.
Okay.
Your colors evident now?
Yes. The royal blue and the white.
The white?
It's one that's...
Well, the first one, yeah.
The one that's there now is...
It's tiny.
Key tinsy.
Yeah.
It looks, uh, perfect.
So we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes.
For, anyone have questions on the side? It does look similar.
You don't need colors on it.
It's much different.
You know what the color of it is?
I believe it's gonna be the same color.
As long as it's bigger and...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But it's gonna be longer and narrower, so.
Does it go like this like that, or?
Yeah, exactly like this.
It's not gonna have this on it.
No, well, I don't know.
Just within the square.
But the Washington, that little piece on top there?
This is gonna go at the, I don't know what you call it, in front, the entrance?
The signage.
The signage.
Oh, okay.
In the front. Listed, the marquee listed all the...
Yeah, that looks more substantial. It'll look nice.
Right.
Hello there. Yeah, it looks a little better.
Someone want to make a motion for approval? Or any concerns?
Well, does it match the requirements of the sign? I have a different sign. I was just making a sign, so I don't know if that...
Different signs is...
The larger one, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it's probably... Looks better, I'm not so sure.
No one wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Some...
Hey, buddy? Trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Trust, deputy mayor Ladado?
Yes.
I would like to put on an agenda for future discussion, the whole idea of our signs in our village. And, you know, I know, I'm approving this because it's following the codes, but I think we need to change our code. We need to change our code. I look at Orange County Transit on this old building with that metal just doesn't look right. You know, I think we need something, I think we need to revisit our, the code on what's allowed in the village and come up with some kind of a plan. I'm looking at Orange County Bagels. I love the way those look. I like the way F&amp;Js has it over on that end.
Right, exactly. That's what I try to point people in the direction of. I'm sure they get the price and they're like, you know, metal and this are much cheaper, but...
Yeah, I just, I think it's time even to take hold of that.
I agree. Maintain some...
We need to, you know, we did have discussions about this, but it was just a discussion. We also need to know the pantone colors that are being used. They're universal. So, but I think, I do think that we need to revisit the signage as well as the lighting for this one. Lights coming up, lights down. So we can, we can discuss that in the next one.
I wonder if there are like, something, if there's grants out there that, you know, we can grab hold of so people can get money, change their signage. I wonder if there's anything like that happening? How do we go about finding it?
You could use the one that you were working on.
We're doing a lot of things with that. Oh, yeah, we're doing so much.
Well, that could be downtime utilization, so what if we had all the different signs?
Yeah. We did discuss five years ago about giving a tax break to the store owners or landlords to redo their buildings. I think that could open up Pandora's box, though, you know, somebody who lives down the side street might know they help with these ones. But I think if there's an incentive, I think it would work.
And the sign is way, you could waive the permit fees, I don't know, that kind of stuff, if they change where you're at.
But it would all tie into what you're talking about. Yeah, time utilization work?
Well, you also, we discussed dependent signs.
Dependent, correct. What was that? I'm sorry. Dependent signs. And the only person who was really for it at that time was Orange County Bank. We didn't force it, we didn't discuss the name or anything, we didn't. So, but it's definitely a conversation that has to be had.
Do we have approval for the 32 West Main Street?
We didn't get to that yet.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, right.
Uh, signage for 32 West Main Street, that's Orange County Bagels. And the way that they have it.
Who's lighting, right? But I don't know who's lighting there.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's no lighting at all. But there's front and back, the same signs in the back. And I think it came down to, instead of it being, what, a hundred dollars a sign for the permit? We can bring that to 75?
It was supposed to be 75, but we already put forward error. It's a confusion if you're not only two small signs, they're more books. It would probably, I don't know. I think with what they've been leaning and everything was a bit similar, we can probably, a little dispensation on that, let it go. That's what I would...
I don't understand, what do you reason?
We're losing 25 dollars a sign because there was an error in communication when I worked in here, I guess, on the actual cost of the sign. And one of the tenants had already committed a pay for it, and he was expecting to be able to put her sign up. And then again, we got the other two there. We're not really losing anything, but, and it's small signs, very tiny signs, very, very much conforming to the requirements of the village, it's very nice. And it's a brand new building, it probably should have been incorporated into the project from the beginning anyway. So I think...
What color is it?
It's brown. Very nice, very demure in my view.
And they're just hanging from the...
Yeah. It retains the quaintness of the village. You don't have any difficulty with it, they cooperate and all of this, and I think it looks nice.
All three signs are the same color?
It looks that way, yeah.
Yeah. I think it should be.
Well, I saw the one, well, I think they're hanging up on the picture, you can see all the colors.
It says all the same.
Yeah, it's all the same. I know, but I mean, it's the same.
It's orange and, I get it early. It's brown background with orange lettering. It's not really, it's, it's flat.
But all three are the same?
All three, yes. So we have Orange County Bagel, Washingtonville Pharmacy, and Hudson Valley Platoon. And these signs will also appear on the back.
Yeah, the front and back of the building are identical, which makes it really nice. So they, they bought a, they bought a nice building and did it right. And it's, it's, it's a, it's a nice golden bedroom, actually, place.
What I like is the sign, it kind of echoes what we have here with the built in Washington side. It'd be nice if all businesses kind of here at that.
Yeah.
It changes the character.
I think we would have to give the incentive for that to, we'll talk about that, you know?
That'd be right.
So I need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Sampson. Roll call trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Ladado? Three C, zoning board, planning board updates, trustee Sampson?
All right, so the zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for Thursday, the 7th at 7:00 PM is canceled. There's no items. Um, but the planning board meeting, their next meeting, is Tuesday, July 12th at 7:00 PM right here.
All right.
So that's our updates.
And you did ask me to make an announcement regarding the events committee. When they're meeting?
Yes, the events committee is meeting on Thursday, the 14th at 7:00 PM right here in Village 12. So they're looking for volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. You know, get your teenagers. Get your contacts.
We have three volunteers in the back. Please raise your hand.
All three.
The three volunteers.
Truly gotta step forward.
Yeah. I'll be there.
Okay, so we have three on the right side of the room, and we have two more. Thank you very much. Thank you for...
So their next event is the rebranding, right, W and M there?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Washingtonville Monthly Market, which will be Saturday, 16th, at 10:00 to 3:00, and then the main date is the 17th. So they're gonna, they probably can always use help for something like that.
Absolutely.
And then planning for Wichita, which is the biggest hit that we have going on.
We need a lot of help there.
Yes.
Okay, so the, so the next market, that's when you went, that's when they went to waterslide? So we'll go to 3E, events committee, waterslide, trustee Ladado, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
For training.
The events committee asked to put a waterslide, of course you might help with this one, at Burnout Park. They're looking for a water valve that they could hook up to. They'd like to put the waterslide on a grass area. So, I don't know. Where's the water valve?
Someplace that's flat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At Burnout?
Yeah, where's the water valve, the bathrooms?
Well, it's only like a three-quarter inch line over there. They need something bigger, like fire hydrant size?
I don't really know how a waterslide works.
They have a waterslide, they just need a little water.
Oh, then, yeah.
So why not set it up?
Like a garden hose?
Yeah.
I mean, hockey rink's the flattest spot there. That's near a water line.
Yeah, they didn't want to put it there.
Yeah.
I guess they were worried about the concrete, and they wanted the grass a little bit softer. It gets a hump off the slide and go back on, and...
What about by the dog park? I think the same was worth one point. You know, that entrance were gonna put that...
With the rock walls.
As a rock wall, yeah. Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
That's rocky over there.
Oh, it is rocky.
Where the bocce ball courts, that's, that was never finished off. It's not, you know, it's not like grass.
I would never play outside. It's a little rock.
I like the pop the water.
I know.
There is a water valve down at the dog park they can hook a hose to and run it down. Put that valve down there, so.
Closest crazy area.
We can't do that.
I mean, that's the closest flat spot around.
So there's no other water valve up at that?
Dog park and the bathrooms are the only two spots.
You said it's too small.
Well, how, how big is this thing?
Well, he said three quarter, I don't know.
Well, how big is the slide?
A waterslide in the...
I mean, they've been renting it, so I'm assuming it's gonna be a decent sized slide.
Well, they could put it next to the concession stand over there. There's, there's that, it's kind of flat over there. It's not sunny there, but it's, it's flat.
They are using paint, right? Yeah, for the...
Well, it's hard, right?
Just a good shape.
Yeah. Just a flat area. And the other thing was to discuss it with the board, increase the water ability or...
So we need a disfor insurance?
I'm gonna say yes.
Okay.
Just because.
It's a waterslide, your kids are bound to...
I mean, I'm okay with, I mean, electric won't be...
Who, who, who's...
Are you, you okay there?
There's one more coming. It always comes in.
Yes. When you start to cough up your liver, let me know so I can move.
I did that last night, it's gone.
I mean, will, is somebody to be supervising the kids, or will it just be...
It's either gonna be the events committee or the place that rents it to them. I think there's two different places for that.
Where the three volunteers at?
Yeah.
Who will then retire and do that?
And the point is, like, so the parents go around?
The markets haven't been as, as huge as they hoped, and it's been excruciating and really hot, so they thought it would be more of a war, you know, to get people there. You know, moms walk around trying to look at stuff, and the kids nagging.
Are they gonna do one as an experimental rental for the rest of the year?
There's only three markets, and one of them is, I'm gonna say more towards October, so I would think just the next two, July and August. I think that's all they can do for me. More, it's gonna be, you know, October.
What in October? Slay wire.
Yeah, I know, right?
Or kayaking.
So, I'm sorry, September. September is the last one, so. That's one half. Because I just, so I'll give them the information and...
Because they need to get us the information.
But we're, we're okay with it?
I think they will.
Okay.
Like Jim said, as long as the...
Supervision.
Yeah, supervision.
Yeah, okay.
The village has to be more...
What do you think?
...more of a liability as far as watching children.
Watch more, watch those kids slide down that waterslide, not go on the waterslide with the kids.
Okay. There's no reason for me to go down that waterslide.
I could just see you saying cowabunga right down that.
Or, or they jump on the slide, and the kids go...
That's more like it.
And, and the road is up six feet at once.
Oh, my gosh.
And the cows on the other side are going, "Why? Why, why us?"
It might be a cool one.
All right, so we just have to get information from the, about the waterslide, so we can forward it to our insurance carrier.
Okay.
So we don't need a motion for that?
No, I don't think so.
So, training updates, trustee Sampson?
All right, so we have added our newest employees for email access to trainings, for IT trainings and the state mandated trainings. And then Hudson Valley IT has assigned a list of different trainings to take. Don't be a, of course, a don't be a bomb. It's hilarious. Some of them are really short, cute, and fun to do, so make sure that you do your, your IT training so that you're not clicking on things you shouldn't be clicking on. And then we have our state mandated trainings, so everyone in the village board, the clerk's office, DPW, even planning board, zoning board have been assigned. And then I'm going to get the community events, both. You know, Rebecca and whoever her, her committee is, Lindsay and Jenny B., get them assigned. Not everyone, just the, like, executive board members. So if we could get it completed by, well, say, July, the end of July, and whoever doesn't get July gets to file until August 15th to complete the trainings. I know you did a lot of it for it.
So if someone was to be trained in, let's say, the police station, and they volunteered for the events committee, do they have to take the training off or what?
Yeah, and they have very special training that I don't even assign to them. They have their own, that's assigned, that they complete. Yeah. The only thing I have to find out is our judges. Is there judges training that they get for?
How to keep people...
Subdue trade. There's a lot to do.
And that's all I'll say.
There you go. So I'll check with our insurance carrier to see if they need something outside with the course assigned to them.
Training classes for Officer Edwin Ramos, chief, you wanna come up here?
Come on up, come on down, see? Ah, pull that chair on up.
John sneezes, I'll stay away. Sorry, sorry, John. So this year's budget, we budgeted for new handguns, optics, which are red dots that go on top of the guns, replace the iron sights. They're not lasers, but you look at the gun, like you're aiming, and there's a red dot there. And flashlights and new holsters, so we budgeted for that. We ordered everything. Some of the stuff has come in, but the handguns take about 90 days to come in. In the meantime, since it's new training for site alignment for the sort of iron sights, we're looking at a red dot now. Glock recommended us to send someone to their red dot site training. So because of that, Glock's a national company, there's nothing local. So I did find a class, August 24th, 25th, and 26th, it's the closest one. And it's the earliest one, which is in Rotterdam, at Rotterdam PD. So it's about an hour and 15 minutes away.
I was thinking Holland is in Rotterdam.
I'm sorry?
I was thinking Hollandwood is in Rotterdam.
So, um, our guns, our firearms should be in late August, so the timing actually will work out. Like I said, because this is a new firearm site that we're looking at, we really should send someone to the training. So the training's $500, we have that in our training budget. And the option was either have him drive, it's an hour and 15 minutes with no traffic. He's gotta be there 8 o'clock in the morning and it's till 5 o'clock. So my suggestion would be to maybe get a hotel for two or three nights. Just so he doesn't have the travel time. Remember, we have to pay him the overtime once he leaves the station. And we'll pay for, he would take a police car, or we have to pay him the IRS rate from Ireland if he took his own car. But I would recommend that we let him take a police car up there, and we book a hotel, which is actually gonna be a little slightly cheaper than paying him for five hours of travel time per day. I looked quickly and I found a hotel per night for $191 at a government rate, but I just gotta call American Fire Department. So if it's okay, I would say the highest we would do is three nights. He only wants to do two nights. Depending on the schedule. So that's what I'm looking at. I'm hoping that they give us the government rate, tax free, but because I'll put it on my credit card, they usually don't allow tax free on an individual credit card. But I'll try. I've tried before, but every hotel's different. I'll try to give them a tax exempt form. Say it's for business, write a letter, and maybe it'll work. Then we gotta pay the tax on it. But they might get, they said they would give us a government discount.
I think he was spending money.
Yeah.
On the...
I'll make a motion.
So, second is trustee Khoror? Roll call trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Trustee Sampson?
Yes.
Trustee Khoror?
Yes.
Deputy mayor Ladado?
Yes.
So he'll take the car, to, to the gray car?
Our car.
To North Carolina?
I can't believe I can made it to where I ran that car.
I thought it was gonna stay there for another year.
I was gonna name it. I figured we could put flowers in it.
Hope for the grand thing.
All right. Yeah, just let us know.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll get three prices in hotels to go with the cheapest. They recommended three, and there's only three I pulled that when you signed up for the class. They recommended three, but I'll pull around for a few others.
Not the cheapest. Just look at there, 'cause, you know, sometimes the cheapest, I don't know if I want to stay in the cheapest.
I don't know how many people go to one of them?
Yeah, no, and I don't know what the areas...
I don't know, I've never been there, so.
Where is it? It's not at the...
It's at Rotterdam, which is...
Oh, okay.
But it's in, I'll just kind of look it up. Is it a town? It's called, look at some, look images up.
Oh, yeah, Rotterdam, his pot stand right there, too. It's only an hour and fifteen minutes. Let's go a little bit right at that.
Pattersonville, New York? That's at Rotterdam, so. I'm thinking with traffic in the morning, it's probably two, two hours and ten minutes. I don't know if that...
Yeah, and they came with traffic, yeah.
So what, would you have him go to 20th, so he could spend the night?
That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, 23rd, 24th, 25th, and then when it's done on the 26th, he can come home. Yeah. But maybe the police department can make you some recommendations, you know, like the police department.
Yeah, the three that were on the course flyer, they had three, so there's only three I pulled.
All right, so they have to do that.
If I could find a red roof fan or something, I'd be...
So he'll come back and then train everyone else?
Yeah, so the timing will be pretty, we're hoping the timing's pretty good, so we have the optics already, the firearms, we don't, and holsters, we don't, the flashlights, we do. So we're hoping when he goes to training, we'll be receiving those guns the week before. We're trading our own firearms, so it's gonna, it's, the whole project was like $20,000, but because of the trade-in, we're paying like, maybe eight, and a trade-in in our guns.
All the trade-in stuff has been approved?
Yeah, we didn't, we haven't done any of that until we actually get the other guns. We're gonna get a trade, we're gonna get a, what did I say? Two E, two, I feel, two 35 per gun for trade-in. So a 20-year-old gun, and the new ones are like 374. Well, models in our cars. Glock 19 MOS version. So MOS allows the red dot optics to be mounted on top of other gun.
All the guns, the chief and I, all the guns are being traded in. So if someone wants their, I've been using it for some years, we have to now deal with the company that he's trading in.
I think he's buying it back.
They could buy it back from the company, but then I can't buy it back.
Okay.
They can, but everybody has to use the red dots.
Thank you, chief. Updated the plans at Villa Tour, like, placed a call to the designers. Still have not heard from them today. Jimmy and I spoke earlier today. I'd like to set up a meeting with Elizabeth Cassidy regarding 23 South Street, which is New York Route 208, regarding what, I think everyone received this. Did everyone look for it? So maybe we could do it the next meeting? Regular meeting, or do you think it's best to wait for the work session? But like, this environment for this?
Probably this environment.
Yeah. Yeah, so we can just discuss it first.
So it's a work session?
Yeah.
So what's the first Monday in the building that when you're not here, you are here? So what's the first Monday in the business that when you're not here, you want to be here?
You wanna wait till it's back, or, do you, September, is there a rush?
August first?
Oh, okay.
August first?
August first, I won't be here. I'm doing the sixteen.
Will the sixteenth be?
Will you, right, you know?
I'll let everyone know via email.
September fifth, Slaver Day.
It's the sixth?
Sixth.
Okay. Discussion about the daughter dwellings, um, John, you are.
Okay, uh, as you know, um, a large portion of the property is full under R one hundred, single-family homes. Uh, over the course of years, so before I got here, uh, there were mother and daughters created, which basically allowed them to have a second kitchen with the stipulation and the agreement in most cases that the property owner could not sell it as a two-family house, even though they look like a two-family house, and that the kitchen would have to be removed. And that's what I've been doing, uh, for most of these that I get, uh, telling the property owner, well, you can turn it into a pantry, which looks similar to a kitchen, but doesn't have a cooking device. If you remove the cooking device according to state code, it's not a kitchen. Uh, so we've been, I've been getting away with that. Now, I haven't had any more new requests until recently for a new mother and daughter, or basically restoring a mother and daughter that had requested the, uh, the stove to be removed and therefore become a pantry. So the quest, the issue we have here is, shall we continue with this particular, uh, requirement for mother and daughters to be removed? Shall we have a dispensation or some other type of consideration to allow them to stay? And how should we handle that? Because you're basically, you're gonna, you probably will wind up with problems where a lot of people are going to want to try to rent them out for additional income, not just simply to have a mother or a relative living downstairs, typically like with a raised ranch. So the, uh, I mean, I had one, for example, without speaking specifically, where, uh, it's on Cambridge Court, for example, uh, not telling you which number. This particular building was given, in this case, a little differently than what was being done by the previous building inspector. They were actually given a permit to have a second kitchen, a mother and daughter, without the required legal affidavit saying it has to be removed, or in some, some way to, uh, not keep it as a two-family, if they chose to sell the home. Uh, what happened in this case was they never got a certificate of occupancy, and the permit expired. So I was able to, uh, get them to take the...